Okay, Rockoff.
Here.
Gurnett.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Milton.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and invocation by Councilmember Franklin Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rather than a traditional prayer, this is more of a prayer of kind of an outreach. You may have read in the paper that Doug Morrow, long, long time OPS teacher and one of the stalwarts of trying to get things turned around for African-Americans, he passed away, so we're praying for his family. Also, in the paper today, you read that Hector Jimenez Jr., known as the Fix-It Guy, and we're praying for his family. Our Attorney General is recuperating from cancer surgery. And then we're asking for traveling mercies for our own Ben Gray, who's having to travel to take care of some sick siblings. And so, keep those people in your mind, and let's have a good meeting today. Thank you.
City Clerk certified publication on data record. On March 13th, North Fairview Council, regular city council meeting on March 17th, 2015, a current copy opening law act is posted in a white binder on these fall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public, and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only attract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute the electronic devices. And before we get started, we have a special presentation today to the city council by a former city councilman, John Riddams, a council member from 1969 to 1973. If you would, please, John.
Thank you. Thank you for opportunity to speak before the council. Mr. President and council members, I asked a city clerk if I could give a little present, and he said, "What is it?" It's a St. Patrick's Day. I said, "It's not a booze." Well, they don't accept booze. I said, "It's not a booze."
He didn't tell us.
And I want to get on agenda. He said, "The agenda is full. It's full." I said, "Well, it's too bad, you know. Can you get me on?" So, he said, "I'll ask the council presidents," and luckily, they allowed me to find a place, before the council meeting, to say few words. And I feel like at home here. It's 45 years ago, I was sitting where you were sitting. President was sitting behind, and a pedestal, and six of us in front, and then a clerk was just like that on the side. It was a lot of fun. Omaha, I jotted down because President said it's only 10 minutes, so if I go in speaking, it might be 20, 30 minutes. So, I jotted down, and then we'll limit to five or six minutes.
Sounds good.
Omaha is a city has shaped my personality in a city that I want to call my second home. For Homers Odyssey, it was Etaka, a city which after many years of absence, of it, he never could forget. To me, it's Omaha. Perhaps to some people, it might seem unimportant and trivial, but for me, this city is where my daughters were born, they're christened, confirmed, and married. Here, I worked, graduated from University of Omaha, along with 12 other members of my family. I was elected to the city council and spent over 30 years of my life here. I'm also very proud that I had opportunity to work on a combining city and county departments in one building. It was not an easy task, because some of the personalities did not want to lose their little kingdoms. I, a former bricklayer, was appointed to the building commission to represent the city, and a plumber, Dan Lynch, to represent the county. It was a very friendly board, and I remember telling plumber Dan that only place water runs uphill is in Army. I always have been very proud of my trade as a bricklayer. During my county times, I became a very good friend of another former bricklayer, Peter Kivit. Mr. Peter Kivit once suggested that we both go out to one of his projects and lay a couple of hundred bricks, but we decided better not to, because the union might not approve When I joined the Bricklayers Union, it was more difficult to become a union mason than getting elected to the city council. To be accepted to the Bricklayers Union, your father or uncle had to be a bricklayer. You know, bricklayers build the famous pyramids in Egypt, and I always wondered what happened to those thousands of bricklayers after they finished to build the Great China Wall? As an architect, I was asked to help designate space requirements for different offices in the civic center. I think it works reasonably well. If not, you can blame me for that. So, I wanted to donate the city council, my city members' painting I made to the city, but looks like the original is missing, or maybe stolen, which makes me very proud, because I'm in a class like Picasso, Rembrandt, and Van Gogh, whose paintings are often stolen. Where's the painting? Oh, oh, there's a, since the councilmen are all part-time councilmen, they have regular jobs, and here, I don't know, maybe I should explain to you, you could see it. Council President Jacober, Council President Jacober had the laundry, and he's hanging laundry. Alvez is a grocer, so I show him cutting salami. Betty Abbott played piano. L.K. Smith was in the police, and he was handling guns and liquor license. Art Bradley always defended MUD and OPBD and City Authority, all the city-appointed boards. Old Swiger climbed a tree and saved a cat, about 60 years age, and here I am in real estate, renting a house for $10 a month. It says Rent Riddams Residence. I thank you. We wish you a perfect painting with love from me. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that nice piece of history and the great addition to our office space there, and maybe someday you'll drop a picture of us, too.
Yeah, too bad, you know, they didn't have the original, but I found a copy of it in World Herald and made a copy of, you know, so please accept it.
Thank you, and thank you for your service as a council member. Mr. Gray.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before you guys leave, before you leave, I just wanted to, just a little bit of history here that I know some of you are aware of. I covered some of these guys. Alvez was the first individual in the country, I think, to win a mayorship on a write-in campaign, and Betty Abbott was the first female to ever run for mayor in the city of Omaha. Just a little bit more history for everybody to absorb as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Most of the councilmen were there for 10, 12, 15 years. I was only newcomer, so it was not easy to get on council, since I don't have a German or Swedish name, you know, it's a little difficult. Riddums, a little bit unusual. So, I worked real hard. With help of other people, you know. Who? Haldau was my campaign manager. He became a mayor later. I had very good people working, big business. I don't know how it is now, but it was not easy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Orders on final reading of planning board attachments. Item number five and six go together. Five is orders to approve an amendment to the land use element of the master plan for the city to change the future land designation from industrial to high-density residential and office commercial for an area generally bounded by Millard Avenue on the north, Q Street on the south, 134th Street on the east, 136th Street on the west. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is the preliminary plat and tiled lumberyard district, along with attached conditions here, except in the preparation and final plan. Is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public carers on numbers five and six for today. Proponents, please. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, L. Jobin, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today, on behalf of the applicant, is Jason Lanahaw of Lanahaw Development, as well as John Coolidge of Lampar Nielsen, the consulting engineers on this particular project. What's before you today is the amendment to the future land use map, and also the preliminary plat approval. What will be before you eventually will be a rezoning from CC, GI, and RR to CC and NBD, which is Neighborhood Business District. And there'll also be a planned unit overlay, redevelopment overlay district on top of this as well. There was a conditional use to allow surface parking in an NBD district that was heard before the planning board on January 7th. That was approved, so that was one of the other approvals that we had for this particular Most of you, I know, are aware of this property. Obviously, it's the former Millard lumber site. This shows in black the boundaries of the site. It's approximately 15.5 acres, and it spans from Q Street to Millard Avenue, and from 134th to 135th on the south. And currently, you'll notice that it's 100% impervious coverage, meaning it's wall-to-wall concrete. And that said, it had buildings in concrete, and so what I think you're going to see here is a noticeable improvement of this particular area. We have a zoning map that shows the existing zoning classifications. You might want to back it up a little bit so you can get the whole flavor there. There you go. And so, we have Millard Avenue here, we have 135th Street here, 134th Street here, and then, of course, Q Street here. To the north, we have CC and R2. To the south, we have Community Commercial and NBD down in here. And then to the east, we have R2 and CC. And then to the west is GI and CC. So, the future land use map currently calls out this property as being industrial, obviously, because it was used as industrial for quite some time and railroad. So, this amendment to the future land use map will allow for the redevelopment of an abandoned and obsolete industrial site, which will allow a new project to provide for a mix of housing, commercial, and office uses to revitalize the heart of the Millard Avenue and Millard area. So, what we have is a preliminary plat today, and this isn't preliminary plat, this is more of a site plan, but what's being called out in the preliminary plat is to divide the 15.5 acres into seven lots. Lot 1 is over here next to Millard Avenue, and this is the lot that is zoned CC, and the proposed use is a two-story commercial office retail structure consisting of approximately 38,000 square feet, and that will be zoned CC. And then you have the lots 2 through 5, which are to be zoned NBD, and those are multifamily use, and that's these lots in the middle here. What's being called for is 338 market rate apartment units. There's a mix of 215 one bedrooms and 123 two-bedroom units. There's a number of outdoor amenities here in this particular building, which is the clubhouse. There's a swimming pool, clubhouse, and other amenities, and lots of green space. And as you can see, we went from, again, 100% impervious coverage to quite a bit of green space, and if any of you know Lanahaw Development, of course, they put in generous amounts of landscaping as well, so I think you'll see a noticeable improvement here. As far as parking spaces, there are actually 321 parking spaces inside the buildings, and there's 223 parking stalls outside of the buildings, and there's a number of on-street parking as well that you'll see here in a minute, for a total of 544 parking stalls with respect to the apartments. Lot 7, which is the lot closest to Q Street, that is to be zoned or rezoned NBD, and this calls for a two-story office building consisting of about 22,600 square feet. And so, this is also what will be before you eventually, is a redevelopment plan and a redevelopment agreement. There will be TIF on this particular project. This is part of that whole CRA that you all were a part of for a number of months, you know, maybe six or seven months ago, for the entire Millard area. As far as the elevation, so what that does is kicks in, of course, the urban design code, so I think what you're going to see is very nice building elevations. These are, this is a conceptual drawing looking south from 135th Street perspective. Here's another one off 135th Street as well. And this is building number one, or the commercial retail space, building elevations. And again, this is more of a detailed plan as well. And this is building three, which is the apartments. Of course, we have plenty of more detailed site plans I'd be happy to share with you, but anyway, lots of pretty pictures, anyway. And of course, the building materials will all be consistent with the urban design code as well. As far as the improvements, try one more time. There's a number of public improvements, and that's where the TIF will come into being used. Right now, currently, there is Cotner and Potwin Street. Currently, they're not even in dedicated right-of-way, so with this plat, they'll be dedicating right-of-way here for Potner, and Potwin, I'm sorry, and here for Cotner. There'll also be a roundabout constructed here at 135th and Potwin. There is plans to rehabilitate the entire bricklayers on 135th Street to the extent they need to be rehabilitated. There's a lot of work that has to be done to reset those, but they're trying to keep the old-town Millard feel with 135th Street. There's also, as you can see here, a number of on-street parking stalls throughout the site that will provide for a nice pedestrian-friendly development. And then the other public improvement is signal modifications to the, for the dedicated left turn at 135th and Q Street and 135th and Millard Avenue. So, there's a number of public improvements being called for here. We did have a neighborhood meeting, I believe, in December, and there was probably 150 or more people. I know Mr. Pauls was there and others here, and we about got a standing ovation, which was kind of unique and interesting, and it was nice to hear. I think people really embraced the project and welcomed us into the Millard area.
Get that in all of your cases, Larry?
Not all of them, no. But in any event, we appreciate the favorable recommendations from the various departments, also the favorable recommendation from the planning board. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have on this particular project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Are there any opponents? Public carers closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please, if I may. Jason Lanahaw, 1911 West Center Road.
Thank you, Jason, and I appreciate how you tried to keep me updated on what you're doing. And we both know this is really going to help the old Millard area. So many people, when you think of West Omaha, you forget that there are, there were little communities out there. And I know your heart is in this plan. And yesterday, when I was having lunch across from where you will be building at the restaurant there, there were a bunch of businessmen in there, and of course, they are really excited. They don't know what's going to go on, for sure. So, and I know your heart is in this, but I have to be honest with you, my heart is in it 40-some years now, having lived in that area or worked in that area. I just truly challenge you to work with all those businessmen and women surrounding your, what I'm called, dream for the future of Millard, that lumberyard. I'm just really asking you to really think about all those businessmen and women around there, so we can develop that area that you are working on right now, and I'd just like to have some response from you.
Yeah, absolutely. Rich, we have, I've been in contact with a number of them. We've had a lot of open communication since we've been working through this process. Part of that neighborhood meeting, we went well beyond that minimum requirement of invitations. We distributed invitations through the whole Millard Business Association, actually. So, we wanted to engage the community. I think we've done that. I've had multiple conversations with the Millard Business Association, basically on a continuing process. So, we have talked to a number of them. We'll continue to engage them. I think we've made a good effort to be a good neighbor more than doing the minimum. I think one of those signs of that was we went ahead, and probably before we should have, before we have gone through the entire TIF process, and with our own dollars upfront, and demoed the entire site as a sign of goodwill, because the neighbors were tired of seeing that lumberyard, that dilapidated lumberyard for so many years. So, I think we've made a good effort, and we'll continue to make that effort through the process. I think we've made it known to them that we view ourselves as their neighbors, and we want to be good neighbors. I think we've tried to do that on every project we've been involved with, and we'll definitely continue it here.
Right. Your reputation, I do not need to expand on that. And I will admit, there are no concrete there now. It's all dirt. You guys really have moved that along. But I just noticed just the west of you, on the other side of the road, there are a number of businesses. I've seen a few of them for sale signs. I think they're anticipating a future for their old businesses, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate what you've done, and like I say, a standing ovation. I don't think that happens too often at public meetings such as you had, but I'm just, I just know that we're going to need your leadership out in that area, because there are awful lot of little businesses there, and they need somebody with your strength to help move this along. I just.
Well, I appreciate it, and we will continue that conversation. We'll continue to be a good neighbor. And likewise, I appreciate your support and communication through this process, which has been going on for quite some time to get to this stage.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lanahaw, a question for you, too. First of all, Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Likewise.
Either for you or Mr. Jobin, along those lines a little bit. So, as describing the plan there, I'll essentially have two almost bookend office-type buildings on the sides, and then largely apartments in the middle.
Correct.
On the ground floor of those apartments, is that where the Neighborhood Business District comes into play, and there'd be mixed use on the first floor of those buildings?
Sure. So, in the actual apartment piece, there will not be any sort of commercial uses, but however, to activate the streets, as opposed to them being just a parking structure, we've broken up a couple functions. One of them being, the biggest piece of it is the clubhouse. So, we've inserted that on the bottom floor, lots of transparency to activate that street feel. To drag that further, we separated the leasing functions into another building along that roundabout, to once again open up the transparency and to create some activity on the street. So, there won't be a commercial function in the multifamily piece, but we have made efforts to activate that street and not just turn our back on it. The other piece we've done to tie it all together, to make it not be a bookend, a bookend, and multifamily, is that we've used architecture consistency, architectural consistency, material consistency throughout the project. So, there are different uses, but we want someone to feel like it's one continuous project throughout. So, there will be a very seamless transition as you walk from, let's say, Millard to Q or vice versa, as opposed to just entering the different zones.
Okay. And there is the idea, though, for some retail or additional ground-floor business, right, then on the ends, or where would you describe that?
Yeah, so along Q Street, it is, we are negotiating with an office user right now, which is a single-tenant, two-story, 22,000 and change square foot office building. Along Millard Avenue, it's a two-story building, retail on the first floor, office on the second floor.
Okay. Are you able to say what types of retail you're looking for yet, or?
We've had a number of conversations. We intentionally haven't executed any sort of agreements. As we are working through this process, we're also working through budgeting, and obviously that's going to drive what rental rates are. But we are, we've had some really good, so what we don't want to do is just have services along Millard Avenue that are, that close down at 5:00, because we're going to have an estimated 500 folks coming home at night from work, and we want places for them to be. So, we're really focusing on bringing in a few folks, the restaurant-type of facilities that provide that bright lights along the street, you know, once the sun's gone down, and to provide services for our folks. So, we're going to have a lot of those sorts of functions. I can't tell you specifically who, but I think we've, at least so far, made some really good progress on, I think, what would be some pretty exciting tenants.
Yeah, I agree. Anything you can do to kind of activate that streetscape and have it be walkable and connected to the traditional Neighborhood Business District would be a positive. And 300 apartments, 340, is that?
338.
So, I'm sure part of the idea is to build the density there and capacity, so that you have additional customers and patrons for the business district itself, right?
This is exactly the idea. And I think we've talked about it a little bit, and at this stage, it's beyond our scope. We hope that this is the catalyst for other businesses to locate, but our goal, our hope, is that other people tag on with us, and that Millard Ave there between the vault fields and industrial becomes, you know, people throwing the Bensons of the world and things like this, where there are things occurring there at night. I think the population's there. I think it's one of the few sites where it's really an urban infill, infill project out west. There aren't many opportunities like that, so I think the infrastructures are in place. It's going to take a little bit of vision, and I think some folks seeing us getting this going. But I, we're pretty hopeful that the snowball effect will occur after we get rolling here.
Yeah, encourage additional investment into the business district while maintaining that character, right?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lanahaw, I'd like to just add my congratulations, and I'm certainly going to support this. Councilmember Pauls, I know that anytime you have the opportunity of talking about this, you do. And one of the things, you can sit down, I'll applaud you, and you can take the picture off. But one of the things Mr. Jobin stated was about maintaining the integrity of that brick street that's out there, and that's great. And I'm glad there's a plan, but I think we ought, for those, at least in my district, that are sitting out there wondering, well, when in the heck are we going to do something about the streets in our part of town? We're not saying that all of the attention is going to go to this particular project that's presented to us. It's one of many that come to us. It's part of the process. But I've got, and I believe my colleagues in the eastern part of Omaha are at brick streets in their area, and we devote an X amount of dollars with a new plan started two years ago, I believe it was, to redo brick streets. But that money, $150,000 a year, doesn't go very far. But I just want to, and if it applies to any of my colleagues in the eastern part of the city, so be it, but we need, and I'm taking this opportunity to champion the time, we need to pay attention to our older parts of town as well when it comes to street restoration, repair, and construction. I'm surprised that my colleague, Mr. Gray, didn't hit the button before I did.
You were first. It's not that you don't, that you were.
But anytime that I have an opportunity to support such a great project anywhere in town, whether it's midtown, near Northside, or North Omaha, or West Omaha, even our wonderful neighbors out in Elkhorn, and it has gone through what I call the mixed master, and it reaches our level of government. It's gone through quite a bit, and not the fact that we shouldn't question it if we have concerns, and I believe we have, and we probably will, as Mr. Jobin has rightfully laid out what the remainder of the process is going to be. But again, at least those that are watching this and are going to be following up in the media, at least in my district, and Councilmember Gray has mentioned this before, we've got to have some sort of rejuvenation on the streets in the eastern part of Omaha at least. And I'm speaking for my district. My colleagues can speak for theirs. But if we don't, I can That if we don't, I can see a groundswell against new development, against new projects, small, medium, or large, in the future if something isn't done. So, not to belabor the point, I'm getting hand signals behind the counter here. So with that said, again, congratulations on your project. I know you have a little bit to do when they talked about green space. You're very good with that. I have seen other projects. You've got, it's a great company. Matter of fact, I believe yours was one that stepped forward years ago with, or a connection thereof, an encouragement of, with Habitat in putting sod and different landscaping amenities at homes that they built. And I commend you on that and those that partnered with that as well.
And dye trees for our parks.
Oh, and the trees?
Dye trees for the parks.
You own a couple of trees, I know that. So with that said, I don't know, I defer to, if Mr. Gray would like to, I know he was reaching for his button.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I made a motion to approve. If I can get a second on that, then, okay. Secondly...
I thought I did.
Yes. Secondly, Councilmember Grenant, what you say is, the key word there is plan. We need to have a plan for what we're going to do to address the older cities, older parts of the city. It is, it's okay to say that we're 50 years behind in our street repair, but it's not okay to not do anything about it.
I said that five years ago. It's 55 now.
Yeah, 55 now. So, you know, it doesn't, it makes, it's okay to say it, but it's not, it's not okay to not have a plan to put something together. And what we really need is a plan. In some of the areas in my district, we don't even have brick streets. We're still doing dirt as, we're still traveling on dirt. So there's a, there's a great need that needs to be addressed, but this is a great project and I intend to support it. But I do agree with you that there are starting to be some serious concerns from people in the eastern part of the city about nothing being done to fix those streets. And some streets in North Omaha have never been surfaced. Others have not seen any resurfacing in 20 to 25 years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Grenant.
This all comes about, I think Mr. Gray and I were at an event and someone approached us and said, hey, what about our street? And I said, well, what about your street? He says, well, we don't get one. So we need to continue working towards getting past that talk in regards to, because it's another five years. I remember five years ago when this all started, when they said we were 50 years behind. So if we don't have it, excuse the pun, in concrete, a plan that we can continue, and I know Public Works is watching this and sitting behind us thinking, well, we do have a plan. Well, our constituents are saying maybe it's not fast enough, it's not hitting the areas that need to be hit. And granted, they play, those departments play a big role in new development. I understand that. And I'm supporting what's before us today. But we need not to forget, in the eastern part of city, and I can say from my area, and I've driven in and out of the foxholes in District Two, that I'm familiar enough that I can say, if we don't execute quickly, there's going to be executions. And I don't want to be on the other end of that, operating into that rope. We've got to get with a plan and stick with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. And I'll also note that I appreciated the remaining use of the name, too, the historical lumberyard district. That was a nice touch, I think, on the development. Now, for the lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Milton.
Pauls.
Mr. President.
Yes.
A five and six are passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number seven, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for the West Dodge Station to allow for automotive washing and vehicle storage located east of Coming Street at approximately 182nd Street. A, planning department recommends approval. B, planning, planning department recommends denial and planning board recommends approval.
Public hearing number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Russ Dob, 2800 South, 110th Court, representing GYC Properties, Inc., which is an acronym for Greg Young Automotive. I'm here with Greg Young to my left and Kyle Haas from E&amp;A and Tim Kerrigan from Investors. This isn't as exciting as the previous project, but it's a, it's a business situation that has arisen principally because the big dealerships in the world are pushing a lot of cars down on their dealers. Greg is, as you know, located at the, at the northeast corner of 180th and Dodge and across, again, on the west of that, on 180th Dodge. It's a pretty mature corner. It's got a number of car dealerships. This particular development agreement has been amended 11 times. And there's a lot sitting back in the, in the depth of the project, back behind the main street, hardly visible. On its east is the back of a car dealership that's been built and approved and placed there. To its primary north, GSC has its large office complex there, which has got virtually five to 10 acres of pretty dense parking. It sits down in a very low piece because there is a church way to the, to the west of it, sitting very high, looks clearly right over it. And then to the east of it is a hotel that butts up with no setback, right square to the lot line. So this, this use is a, it's a permitted use. It's, it's proposed to be extremely narrow. What Mr. Young proposes to do is support his operation by placing a well-designed car wash there. Very subtle, very well-done, very landscaped. We've written it so that the amendment does not allow any sales to occur from the lot. It's to not be a signed lot, it's to be very well-designed, to be compatible. After we got approval from City Planning, it, it, we were careful to be sure to add to it that it would comply with urban design standards. And that will be a place where new cars will be cleaned and prepared for sale with no sale activity, no commercial serious presence there, but autos will be moved across the street to his dealership. So again, amendment, it's not very long, but it prohibits him from, from doing things inconsistent with any of the other provisions of the previous 10 amendments and has a use in it, which is a permit, part of a use that's under a permitted automotive service use, so it's an approved use for storage and for a car wash. Not very complicated. And it'll be well-engineered, well-designed. I, I think, rather than use the overhead, I'll just kind of show you the picture. It's just well-designed on all sides, glass, steel. It's a General Motors-type look, if we described it that way. And it, it's very important on a business basis to supplement what he does. And as you see, a lot of times you see one of the people, the planning board asks the question, well, will it help alleviate some of the new cars that are parked on the streets where you are? He tried very hard to find some locations around it, not successful. It's pretty, pretty well-saturated and obviously the automotive emphasis is on the north side of the street. So by doing this well, I think it will, it will fit in well with the other uses there and also at the same time help put some cars on the streets as, as what he tries to do all the, all the time. So with that, I think it's fairly simple. The key would be, I am prepared to show you how it would be compatible in terms of design with the adjacent uses. And we do have some other design material, clearly not as exciting as the previous applicant, but probably just as sound from a business point of view.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. There may be some as we go along here. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Gray.
Just a quick question from Planning Department because you have here the planning board's approval, but the planning board, planning department recommending denial. And if I can get a, an explanation from planning as to what, what you see as some of the barriers or problems with this?
Sure. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. When staff reviewed the application and the plans that came along with it, the vehicle storage component of the applicant's request is not a permitted use in the mixed-use zoning district. Mixed, as you all know, mixed-use districts are intended to have uses that complement each other, have uses that work well together. We try to provide, and they try to provide for, those mix of uses, office and commercial uses, also apartments, multifamily living. In this case, there are even some civic uses that are nearby, the MU zoning with the church and the school. So when we look at that, that's a lot of the things that we look at. And like I said before, the vehicle storage portion is not allowed in the mixed-use zoning district. In this case, when this development agreement was originally written, vehicle storage was not asked to be part of that agreement. And since the code doesn't allow it, the applicant needed to come through with the major amendment. And we just didn't feel like it was, it should be a primary use in a mixed-use district. It's an accessory use to the, the auto dealership that is on the northeast corner. And it just, we just felt that it shouldn't be placed wherever it's going to be placed.
Have, how many times, I guess I'm concerned about, do we set a precedent or do we run a risk here of doing that in this particular instance or, because I know there have been variances before where the department and the, and the planning board have disagreed. And I guess I'm just wondering, just in terms of planning, what, are we on a slippery slope here or is it, just, you know, just kind of give me a gauge of that?
Sure. Well, the applicant's representative said that this, this mixed-use development agreement's been amended 11 times. I don't think there's one mixed-use development agreement that's been approved by Planning Board and Council that has, has not been amended. I, you know, 11 might be quite a bit. But this mixed, this particular mixed-use development agreement has gone through quite a bit of change. If you looked at the original plan that was passed a number of years ago, it's, it's changed quite a bit. So the amendment process for mixed-use districts, it's not abnormal. Yeah, we could be starting, we could be going down a slippery slope and setting a precedent that vehicle storage is an acceptable use in mixed-use districts. You know, unless it's written into the agreement upfront and it made sense as a whole, I'm not sure the department could ever support an amendment that allowed it, so.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in my short tenure here on, on the council, I've seen where the planning department, the planning board and the city council have not always been in alignment, which I think is good, that each one of us are questioning each other. I mean, this is not the first time that, that I, that I think in at least part of one of the three different bodies have been in disagreement, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
Well, I just want to say, as kind of a follow-up to the last conversation and to Mr. Grenant, who would like to see more money and more, more work done on the streets in East Omaha. Well, you know, with the, with the wheel tax and selling more cars and having the ability to collect more money for street repair, and also, I don't know how much this building is going to cost, but I'm guessing that it's going to be a significant increase in property tax that, that the city will see. And so I think having development like this is exactly what we need to continue to grow our economy. I'm assuming that there'll be additional jobs. I don't know. Mr. Young, would you mind coming up?
Greg Young, 1418 North 191st Avenue. I would, I would guess probably 12 to 15 additional jobs because we're going to put three to four technicians up there. We'll probably have three to four detail technicians as well because we're doing details and used car inspections, new car inspections, so.
And that, and I don't know if we could put that photo up on the overhead because when we talk about car storage, I can understand why we wouldn't necessarily want to make this a regular thing that we approve.
Which photo?
I think, Mr. ...
The building?
Yes, the picture of the building. Because when I, when I look at kind of a building like that with all the glass, that's not something that I would necess, I wouldn't look at that and say, oh, I bet that stores cars. And I think that that's probably, I'm guessing, what we'd want to get away from when we're talking about car storage for mixed use. We don't want to have a bunch of parking lots or, or kind of the shed-type look with metal panels and that kind of thing. This doesn't look like that to me. And I think where the land is, you know, I think it sets back, it's kind of, it's not necessarily easy to get to, so I'm not sure.
It's certainly not the most desirable piece of property out there. Okay, so here is Toyota. Here is the Residence Inn Marriott. And then here's CSG. And two is the lot that we want to develop it on. And, I mean, it is not visible from the, from the main street here, Burt Street. You can't even see it. You go up Coming Street, you can, you can see it, but right here, there's a little, oh, six-foot burn that, so it sits down below. I mean, it's, it's a, it's far from a real high, high piece of property.
And I'm, I'm looking at this, there's four, five, six. Is that correct? There's seven car dealerships on this corner?
You've got...
Or eight.
Two, three, four.
With infinity.
You've got this now developed, which is part of Nissan. So one, two, three, four, five, six, you're going to have more there. Seven, eight, nine, and this is just a parking unit.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about Ford right there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, really, this entire intersection is kind of dedicated to cars.
Right.
And, and where you're at, you're right next to the Toyota dealership, which is cars and car storage.
Yeah.
And right behind...
And then this new lot would be there.
Yeah, and then you're right behind a hotel and I think you're on the other side of the parking lot. Is that right?
Right. And the hotel butts up right against the property line. I mean, there are, there might be eight feet, six, eight feet, but not much.
So I guess, what I would say to, to the council members, I don't necessarily think we're in a slippery slope because, because of the, kind of the unique space where this is located. I understand the, not wanting to have car storage normally in mixed use, but I think when you're talking about having a car wash, car storage in a building that doesn't look like a car storage building and it's right in the heart of where we have nine or 10 car dealerships, it really, it really just makes sense. And again, this, I mean, this is what I want to see, more jobs, no TIF money. Mr. Young's going to pay for the whole thing himself. And this is what development in Omaha is and putting something here, I don't think is going to detract from the area. So I think in this particular case, I agree with the planning board. And, and I would ask, this kind of, this area sits just on the other side of my district and is actually Councilman Thompson's district. But I took a look at this a couple of weeks ago and, and I guess I, I really would ask the, the council to vote yes and follow the recommendation of the planning board. to vote yes and follow the recommendation of the Planning Board. I have nothing further, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Gernant.
Thank you. So it is a little bit unusual that the Planning Department is not in sync with the Planning Board or vice versa, but in this case, and we'll have more of those coming, I think, soon in other instances, but I think that Mr. Fanslaw would be accurate to characterize this as, the Planning Department sees it as a land use issue. But the planning, the applicant, Mr. Young, and the Planning Board, if you had more of a practical issue, would that be a fair characterization?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Yeah, that could be accurate.
Okay. And there's no opposition here today. Obviously, engage your neighbors and no objections from that land use. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Yeah, Mr. President. And I intend to support this. I mean, so don't get that confused, but what I am saying is that if someone else comes down here and they want the same sort of thing, I guess I'm wondering what our argument is going to be against it. So that's my only concern about it, but I do plan to support it. As yell, I guess, whoever, somebody, yeah. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, just want my colleagues to know that Mr. Young did reach out to me and for the reasons stated that it is sort of R.O. Roe, and I do believe that occasionally you have rules, but then you have exceptions to the rule. And I think this one qualifies as an exception, so I will be supporting what the Planning Board recommended.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion in a second. Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Mr. President? Yes.
Seven is passed, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number Eight through Ten shall be laid over for two weeks. Item Number 11, Resolution Special Use Permit Application submitted by St. John's Lutheran Church for a major amendment to a special use permit to allow religious assembly in a development reserve district, environmental overlay district located at 4519 Kelby Road is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. There's a request from the applicant for a one-week layover and a continuation of public hearing.
Second. Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Liquor. Item Number 12, 10850, 59 South 108th Street. Class C liquor license, new application, new location. If you wish to grant this applicant, you need to grant a contingent on their getting proper permits for their outdoor area.
Public hearing on Number 12 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members, Happy St. Patrick's Day. Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. My applicant is not with me today. He unfortunately, his mother is very ill, and he was called to hospital, where she may not make it, unfortunately. This is just taking over an existing place, and we will, of course, get any permits. There's an area in the basement and an area outside that they're going to add on. And we'll, of course, would ask you to support it, subject to getting those permits.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Mr. Kelly, is this, are you just talking about the upstairs and the lower?
There's a, there's a, there's a basement area which they have not licensed before, and they're going to do some work down there. And then there's a patio area evidently, which they haven't, which we have to do also.
There's not going to be an outside?
By my understanding, there'll be some small outside area. I have not gone out and looked at it, but I.
I don't know where to put it.
Well, I don't either.
Okay.
But then maybe, maybe we're just talking, when I talked to Jay, he thought there was a small outside area as well.
I'd start, be right there or on.
So it's got to be, it's, we're talking about a very small area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights.
Motion approved.
Rule call.
Subject pending getting the proper appropriations.
Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. On Number 12 is adopted, six, zero, one passing. We'll take Items 13 and 14 together, the same applicant, for two licenses. 13 is the 1702, at 1702 Coming Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. And 14 is a catering license for the same applicant, the same location.
Public hearings on Number 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Near Jaguero for the applicant, 105 North 30 First Avenue.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
13 and 14 are adopted, seven to zero. Item Number 15, Decisions. 1502, Mike Fahey Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on Number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, council members, again, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I'm appearing here with Brett and Cindy. I would give their last name, but I think I might butcher it, so they're here if you have any questions. And on a personal note, I'd like to, assuming this goes through, we'd like to welcome them to NODO. And if you have any questions about the operation, they're here.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved, subject to Mr. Kelly being able to say to him last night.
Well, that would have been so recent.
Motion approved.
Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. 15 is adopted, six, zero, one passing. Item Number 16, Nolice Pizzeria, 4007 Farnum Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on Number 16 is today. Proponents?
Mr. President, again, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Appearing here with Joe and Kristen Marsh, who are here with Nolice Pizza. If you have any questions for them, go ahead.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Kelly, I've always said that people who hire you always have good fortune, good luck.
Most of them are successful.
And then I just got to thinking, this is a little naughty, but has anybody ever told you that you look like a leprechaun?
I've actually been told far worse.
Move the approval.
Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. 16 is adopted, six, zero, one passing. We'll take Items 17 through 20. They're all the same applicant at different locations. 17 is Speedy Mark, number 2725, at 132nd, 13235 Grover Street. A package liquor license, new application, old location. 18 is at 4334 South 84th Street. 19 is at 8724 North 30th Street. And 20 is at 2920 South 120th Street.
Public hearing on Number 17, 18, 19, and 20 are today. Proponents, please.
Luke Moser, Western Wall, 8400 I Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Second. Mr. Moser, I just want to take a minute to wish you luck and tell you have tall shoes to fill. I mean, Mr. Ekwal, you're taking over for one of the nicest gentlemen to ever come walking down the street, I suppose.
Absolutely. And, you know, we're, I've learned a lot from him in the short time I've known him. And, yeah, you're right, he's, there's a big shoes to fill.
So I wish you luck and.
Thank you.
Hope you have the same success he did.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now for the lights, rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
17 through 20 are adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item Number 21, The Night Out, 3902 Farnum Street. Request permission for an addition to the class I liquor license of an outdoor patio approximately 18 by 40 to the east.
Public hearing on Number 21 is today. Proponents?
Yeah, Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, here for the last liquor application. And then I think I'm done for the day. With me here also is Kelly Mock, one of the applicants. She's here. Or she was here. This is. And if you have any questions, this, of course, is in the Blackstone area. This is for a small addition that they're doing outdoors. And we're here for any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
I just have a question for. Mr. Jerem. Mr. Jerem, you said you had eaten there, The Night Out, but you never told me if the food was any good.
Since I'm passing on this item, I will decline to answer.
Thank you.
But look at me.
Second. Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. 21 is approved, six, zero, one passing. Consent agenda. Any member of City Council may cause an unpleasant agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by City Council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on Agenda Items Number 22 through 30 will be held on March 10th.
Second.
Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Jerem passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. 21 is approved, six, zero, one passing. Consent agenda. Any member of City Council may cause an unpleasant agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by City Council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on Agenda Items Number 31, 32, and 35 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item you number, agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearings are closed.
Move the second.
Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
31, 32, and 35 are adopted, seven to zero. Item 33, Resolution The Appointment of Beverly Thompson as a member of the Library Board is hereby confirmed.
Motion approved.
We have to have a public hearing on Number 33 for a strand?
Yes.
Proponents, please. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second?
Yep, there is.
Ms. Milton?
I just wanted to say I would like to thank Beverly Thompson for her willingness to serve on the Library Board. So we look forward to working with her. I've gotten to know her over the last couple of years, and I think she's going to be a wonderful addition. And with that, I would like to thank Adrian Suarez Delgado as well. And it's because of people like this who are willing to give their time that it really makes our boards work the way they do and really benefit Omaha. So I want to thank them both. And we kind of went past Mr. Michael Young, who's willing to serve on the Transit Authority. But we do put these on the, kind of the consent resolutions, and I often like to take the time to thank all of these people for their willingness to serve. And I want to thank the people who have served on the board in the past for all their time and dedication. So I think we're very lucky that there are spouses of our council members that are willing to do that. So thank you to Mrs. Gray, and thank you to Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was delighted reading the paper when Beverly Thompson said she was not a yes person. It's nice to know we have persons thinking on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a motion in a second, right?
Yep.
Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thompson passed the second time for potential conflict of interest. It's adopted, six, zero, one passing. Item 34, Resolution The Appointment of Adrian Suarez Delgado as a member of the Library Board is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing on Number 34 is there. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Rule call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gernant?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
34 is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on Agenda Items 36 through 42 shall be held on third reading.
Public hearing number forty-three is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I left the information on my desk that I said I was going to bring. But if I remember correctly, the construction part that will go to the SEB will be somewhere in the three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar range. And then the portion that went to SEB for design was somewhere in the seventy-eight thousand dollar range. So, I was glad that the people who worked on this, Emily Healthclaw, was willing to follow along with this council. The wishes of this council is to make sure that everybody benefits from these things. And so, it's a West Omaha project, but I want to be a part of that movement also. Thank you. Move the approval. No, this is just a public hearing.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Forty-four, orders to clear and access the acquiring private property for the purpose of the Eighty-Fourth Street Public Improvements from Dodge Street to Pacific Street.
Public hearing number forty-four is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-five, orders to clear and access the acquiring private property for the purpose of the Hundred and Fourteenth Street Public Improvements from Pacific to Burke Streets.
Public hearing number forty-five is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-six, orders to accept the bid from Harmark Uniform Services to provide linen and towel laundered for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing number forty-six is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item forty-seven, orders to amend section forty-nine-two to amend and harmonize procedures with the Omaha Plumbing Code for Design Review and Inspection.
Public hearing number forty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items forty-eight through fifty-one shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule Seven C, the public hearing on agenda items fifty-two through fifty-eight shall be held on the second reading. Any motion going to executive session?
Motion going to executive session to discuss labor negotiations.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jarom. Milton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Three oh seven.
The City Council will now go into executive session where we will only discuss labor negotiations.
Hang in there.
Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea.
He picked it up.
I did. We sent you a new resolution. I didn't make the form of the contract, but we can just type in city clerk on there.
And mayor. Motion to come out of executration. We need a motion to come out of executration. Thompson, Kurnapp, Gray, Charham, Melton, Pauls, Mr. President. 3:59. Thompson, Kurnapp, Gray, Charham, Melton, Pauls, Mr. President. 4 o'clock.